Yeah, we usually go over there every year. I've got reservations there in October.
They won't even.
We've probably been over there twenty out of the last twenty-one years.
No, there's been a lot of state overreach lately.
That's what makes it fun. There's two kids the same age. That's what makes it fun.
Meeting called to order. Jeanie, you ready? Didn't ask you. Meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Quiner.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell. Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker. Councilwoman Maynard.
Here.
And Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Prayer this evening will be given by Councilman McBride. Please remain standing for the pleasure allegiance. I'm thinking as I'm talking, let's have a moment of silence, too. A good kid that, I say kid, he was thirty-three years old, but Kyle Thornton passed away last week. And thank love his mom and dad, too, and under the hurting. So appreciate him a moment of silence for that.
Our Father, we thank you for this day and for the opportunities to be here tonight. And I thank you for the opportunity to serve. God, I do pray for this family and their time of bereavement. I pray for this mom and dad, that you would give them comfort and mercy and grace. Father God, I pray that you would be with us as we conduct business on behalf of the city. I pray that you would give us wisdom as we make decisions. And Father, I'm thankful for the leadership of our city, our city manager and his staff and the department heads. I pray that you would be with the employees each and every day, that they carry out and do their duties. Pray for protection for them and their families. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll be recognizing any visitors who'd like to speak to the council. If so, please approach the podium and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Savannah Mead. I'm a prevention coordinator at ASAP of Anderson. I live at one four six Garden Circle in Norris, but I work at one three one South Charles G. Severs Boulevard. Some of you may know, this week is our executive director Kayla's last week with us. So I wanted to come by and introduce our new executive director, who might be a familiar face to some of you all. But I'll let Shayla kind of introduce herself.
If I have to introduce myself. I'm Shayla. It's so exciting for me just to be back here with all of you all, to get to work with you all in this capacity. But just excited to be here to get to serve Clinton and really just get to be a part of the community that I feel like helped raise me, but also that gave so much to me. So it's super exciting to be here, to be back in this role. And I'm trying to bring my grandparents back, too, so I'll keep you posted.
Glad you're back.
Good to have you back.
Anyone else? Got the front row today. Kelly, can't already see you.
Hello.
Communications from the mayor. I do have one thing. Catherine Burbank is not going to be here today. And I wanted to share some things that are going on in the city. So the food truck rally is back, starting tomorrow. They'll be every Tuesday through when Roger, you know?
We'll do them at least through the end of June and probably take off the hot months and start back right after Labor Day.
So the food trucks will be there from four to eight. Now, they're not going to be in the traditional place they've been in the past. They're going to be up closer. They're going to be over, past the restrooms or right before the restrooms?
Just for tomorrow.
Just for tomorrow?
Yeah, just for tomorrow. We're having the, which council approved a couple of months ago, the lower parking lot resealed and restrapped. And finally, the weather's got good enough, the company can come out. So they're starting tomorrow. So we moved the food trucks just, just north of the bathrooms, just for tomorrow.
Just for tomorrow?
Yep.
Okay. Also, the, if you all follow Facebook, you know, the Historic Downtown Committee Youth Board won the five thousand dollar contest they were in for March Madness. And that includes the Clinton High School students. When they came and talked to us a couple of months ago. They will be using that money to plant trees on Main Street and do an art installation for Terrapin Hill. So congratulations on that. And I think, were they cherry trees or just trees in general? Cherry blossoms?
Think of ones that go around City Hall.
Yeah. So congratulations to, to them. And that's all I have from a, from a mayor's standpoint, going into committee reports. City School Board report, Kelly Johnson.
Good evening. Three and a half more days and we will have completed yet another, another school year in Clinton City Schools. So we are wrapping up with a bang. We are doing water days. Thankful, many thanks to the Clinton Fire Department for completely destroying our front yard today at Clinton Elementary School. But the kids had a blast. I think I have thrown away at least forty-nine pairs of wet socks that we have found in the front yard. But they had a blast with water day today. So we're doing water days. We're doing incentive days and field days and bounce house days. And we're going to see how much fun we can cram into the last week of school. Many thanks to Chief Becker, who he and his crew went up to North Clinton today and had a special lunch with our North Clinton Safety Patrol. So as always, it's very nice to see our community coming together to support Clinton City Schools. It's just a great place to be. So hot on the topic is third grade retention. That's getting quite a bit of attention in the media this week. Our raw scores have come in for Clinton City Schools. They are raw scores and we've had to convert them using a cut score formula that they sent to us. So we're not going to go public just yet with our actual percentages because we want to make sure that we hear from the state to make sure that what we're publicizing is one hundred percent accurate data. But I will say that I am very, very pleased with how our third grade performed. When we look at the number of kids who were proficient versus the number of our kids that are in the approaching category, the state has put an appeal process to where if they scored above fortieth percentile on their universal screener, which for us is our EZCBM assessment, we, the parents can apply for an appeal for this law. And we have a very good number of our kids who have met the qualifications, by our calculations, for an appeal to the State Department of Ed. So it is going to still impact some children. But I will say that when we look at our summer school registration, all but a handful of parents have already enrolled their child into summer school so that they can take that pathway for promotion. So even though I still am very, very unhappy with the law, and I've been very vocal about that, I'm still very unhappy with the law. I do think that our third grade teachers have risen to the challenge. They have had an extremely stressful year, meeting these demands and with the pressure that has been placed on them. But we will be, we will be okay in Clinton City Schools. So more to come on that. Our graduation will be this Thursday. It will be at Faith Promise again. And good news is that we have grown our sixth grade program so much that we now can't hold, there's not a venue large enough for us to do Clinton City Schools all in one graduation ceremony. So we flip flop them each year. So North Clinton and South Clinton will be first this year. So they'll be at nine o'clock in the morning at Faith Promise. And then Clinton Elementary School will be at eleven o'clock. So we will have two services there, or two ceremonies there. And then, just to kind of update you on some things, school may be closing, but summer school will be opening very quickly. So on June the fifth, on Monday, we will start our four-week summer school program. That's going to be held at North Clinton Elementary School for the whole entire system. So North Clinton will host that school. And then at Clinton Elementary, we will be working on relining the sewage system in an effort to try to keep us from busting up the beautiful floor in Clinton Elementary School. We're going to go in and they're going to do some fancy, fancy contraption where they're going to reline the sewer lines. And we'll only have to bust up a little small piece of the terrazzo floor instead of the entire terrazzo floor to replace the pipes. So that's going to be a pretty significant project that we're working on there. We're also partnering with the city and Dwayne is helping us. We are actually going to try to move the playground from the front to the back and work on an all-inclusive playground for Clinton Elementary School. We have several wheelchair students that attend school there. And we want to purchase some equipment for them to be able to access the playground. And so we will be turning the lower parking lot. If you recall in the back, there's two levels of parking lot. We'll be turning the lower parking lot into a new playground area. And then we're going to extend, we call it the Wiggles and Giggles Parking Lot. But the parking lot that we built several years ago where the Wiggles and Giggles were, we'll be extending that out and creating additional parking there to compensate for the parking lot, or parking spaces that we will be losing, losing there. So that project is still kind of out in the distance. We've got to get the parking, new parking done first before we start moving in new playground equipment. But you will start to see that move throughout the course of next year. Then we will also be adding some additional items to North Clinton Playground, a complements of a donation by Mark Trout with Rusty Wallace Chevrolet and the Clinton Rotary Club. So that will be taking place late summer, early fall. And then we, we'll also be tearing up all of our brand-new flooring at South Clinton Elementary School that was defective. And we will be doing that project again this summer. So Scott Ray is looking forward to that, but they'll be replacing all of the flooring that we put down that was defective. So that will be happening at South Clinton. So school may be out, but lots is still happening. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Kelly?
And Scott Ray does have a budget amendment today.
Kelly, one question. Is, is that flooring covered under any kind of guarantee? Is that at our cost or their cost?
It is at their cost. It is at their cost. And Scott Ray can, he can expand on that when he comes up because he's been the mastermind behind it.
Some masterminds being recalled. I mean, great, great job.
Thanks for pointing that out.
When he first noticed the defect, he said, you may not notice it at all, Kelly. Kevin, just look. And I walked out in, I was like, oh no, oh no, we're not settling for this.
Fortunately, the contractor, the installer, everybody's agreed. So we're not, actually, we're gaining labor, the cost of labor for us to move furniture. I have back charge on that. I still have the contractor's retainage, so I'll live up to my reputation of being a little bit frugal. So any more questions on, on what Kelly talked about? Budget amendment number five should be in your packets. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Some of the highlights, generally, May and June, we present a rather large budget amendment. We're trying to do that monthly as the controller's requesting. But the line share is capital improvements. We've had an access control system that we've budgeted for throughout the system. Intercom systems were updated, some speakers for, and camera additions due to the additions at South. And window enhancements for security, securing the windows, any glass that is at ground level. We've done that. So any questions on budget amendment number five?
Do you hear a motion for approval for budget amendment number five?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Quiner.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell. Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker. Councilwoman Maynard.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Yes. Budget amendment number five passes. Hey, Scott, before you sit down, can you just give us some highlights of your all's budget?
For next year?
Yeah, please.
Sure.
Yeah.
General Purpose School Fund, we have three funds. The General Purpose School Fund, a Federal Projects Fund, and the Cafeteria School Nutrition Fund. General Purpose School Fund increased, depends what you compare it to, but a percent and a half, based on the current amendment that you just approved, we increased our budget by one point five percent from that, just in GP, which is, you got to account for like this year in twenty-two, two, twenty-three. We had some capital expenditures that I just went over. We also finished the South Clinton addition. Those expenditures are lying in there. Generally, we're between a three and a half and five percent salary increase, depending on where the staff fall. That's laid into the budget. No significant increase in the total number of staff. Our enrollment's kind of flat. And federal projects, we don't get approval on a lot of the federal projects, the grants, until later in July and, well, June and July. So we just kind of lay in our best guess. But those are reimbursement grants. They're not matching. If we spend the money that's been approved, we get the money back. School nutrition, we've been under a food service management contract for this upcoming, will be our seventh year, sixth or seventh. In any event, we pay per meal. So our costs are fixed. If they sell a meal, we pay a certain fee and we get reimbursed by the USDA for that meal. So there's a lot less risk on, on our side. The budget flows with how many meals are being sold. And that's, that's pretty much the nuts and bolts of cafeteria fund. Our cost would be cost of equipment, a new steamer, a new oven, the walk-in refrigeration systems. We still own all that and have to pay for the repairs and maintenance and replacement. That may have been too much for you?
No, that's good. I appreciate it.
Trying to be quick. But any questions on our budget numbers, as you get into them, I'd be happy to answer an hour later.
Any additional questions for Scott? Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Clinton Regional Planning Commission report, Vice Mayor Gann.
The Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission both met on May the eighth. Board of Zoning Appeals, applicant Jovan Engas requesting special exception to allow ten to twenty chickens for his property located at six nineteen Black House Valley Road. This piece of property is over eight acres. And based upon that, that, that request was approved. Applicant Mary Nolte requesting front setback from thirty feet to ten feet to place a carport in the front yard for property located at four-ten Park Avenue. There was previously a garage there and still a concrete pad. And she was going to put a carport in that was also approved. The Regional Planning Commission, Josh Sherlin requesting final plat review and approval for property located at three-eleven and three-thirteen Potter Road. There were a couple of contingencies that had to be met there, but subject to those contingencies, this was basically a redivision of property. Subject to those contingencies being met, this was approved. And then Bob Gillum requesting final plat review and approval for property located at one-ten East Center Stage Business Park. Subject to getting signatures and stamps, this was also approved.
Any questions for Vice Mayor Gann? Thanks, Larry. Do you have anything under?
I'm sure Green Maccado will be having their jam on the hill, but I'm not sure exactly.
Dates.
Dates or who it is right now.
Okay, all right. General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things here. We have received notifications from TDEC of the approval of our grant application for water and wastewater improvements for downtown Clinton. This is a, this is a cooperative effort with CUB, and the work will be done in association with our tax grants. Therefore, I request authorization to accept the grant, execute the grant contract. The amount of this grant, Chris, with the handout, Chris, Gail, and Greg Jones, the CUB, has done the majority of the work on it. I've kind of stayed out of the way. One point eight million, with some change, coming from TDEC. And then additional four hundred thousand from the ARP funds for wastewater and water improvements from the county. But this money will kind of be passed through money with CUB. They'll, they'll be contracting it and doing it as we are doing the street improvements. And I think according to CUB, a lot of those water and sewer lines are almost a hundred years old. They'll be replacing.
Hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Tennessee State Legislature has passed several bills concerning school safety. And the state budget includes funding for one SRO in every public school. The funding will be through the Department of Safety. We need to update our MOU with the Clinton City Schools to provide one SRO to each of our three city schools. I would therefore request authorization to execute the MOU.
Hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? I mean, they're giving us money, guys. It's like two point nine in the SROs. This is great. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Industrial property sale. We have received a request from Mark DeValle of Andersonville to purchase five point one-one acres of tract of property at Frank L. Diggs Drive in the Clinton I-City Five Industrial Park. This is an irregularly shaped tract and is not well-suited for large industry. Mr. DeValle intends to develop the site for small manufacturing and warehouse facilities, which is a suitable and allowable use. We would therefore request authorization to proceed with the sale of this tract, which is tax map fifty-five partial one-nineteen, at a total sale price of sixty-five thousand dollars.
Hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Does that come out? I can't do it in my head. Is that twelve, thirteen thousand dollars of acreage?
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit cheaper than what we've been selling. I think it comes out at about twelve-five roughly. We've been selling it for about fifteen, but it's, it's a irregular shape. It's on solid rock.
Has a body, yeah, don't we?
But it's, it's, nobody's really ever looked at it. So it's, it's a good use. And he's, he showed us some of his plans for it. It's actually, I think, eleven warehouses for a lot of industry, like heat and air company, welding company, something like that.
It's a good idea. How much, how much more acreage do we own in that? Is this it?
I think that's it.
Well, we've got two tracts at the back end on the mountain roadside, probably ten acres total.
Yeah. I didn't think we had that much left.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to access it. There's not much left.
Any other questions, discussion? May I have a motion and second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. July, the July twenty-twenty-three city council meeting, due to several schedule conflicts, I would recommend that we reschedule the July city council meeting for Monday, July thirty-first at five-thirty.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance report, I'll defer to Chris.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager. So as of the end of April, we're eighty-three percent of the way through the fiscal year. We've received a little over a hundred percent of our projected revenues. However, some of that is our ARP funds. Your bigger revenues have come in at or above projections. One revenue that didn't come in before our meeting, it came in about two o'clock this afternoon, so I didn't have it on this report. But our local option sales tax had another, what I would call a very good month for the month of April, up eight and a half percent from the same period last year. Our expenditures are being held to budgeting projections at ninety-one percent. Keep in mind, there are several large capital outlay items that are in there as well. So departments are doing a good job with that. Fund balances. If we were to close the year today based on revenues over expenditures, we would increase the fund balance grand total of about three million, two and a half million dollars. I can answer. I'll have, like Scott said, toward the end of the fiscal year, we have usually one or two large budget amendments. I did one last month to try to, to get everything in line, just so the very last one next month won't be so large. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions for Chris? I know you'll be presenting the first reading of the budget, too, so we may have some questions during that time also.
That's all I have, Mayor.
That's it?
That's it.
First reading of new ordinances. Ordinance number six-seventy-seven. This is the planning, zoning, and code fees. You hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? I would like to take a couple of minutes if I start. Do you, Matt, or whoever needs to come, Preston, can maybe come up, or John? And just kind of give us some highlights and what, what the rationale was behind that and... If not, just for us, also the, the general public.
Mayor, while they're on the way up here, which I think most of you know it, John Householder will be retiring here in a couple of months. I think July seventh is his last day. And Matt Widener, who has previously worked for City of Oak Ridge, but has had several jobs, very impressive resume. He'd been working part-time for us for two, three, two years, kind of filling in and helping out when we got busy. If, if we had people on vacation. I heard Matt full-time last month to replace John. So he'll, he'll take over as our building official, officially, July seventh.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're revisiting our fees. Of course, you guys have seen this already, but, and the mayor's got a, got the motion on the table there. But it's been since two thousand nine, since the fees have, have seen any changes or increases. And then also, there's been some mandates, federal and state mandates, put on us in the last several years that we're, we're doing permits and other types of work under the city's offices without any fees or any kind of structure to help pay for some of this workload. We were actually able to hire another person. Roger was, was helpful in letting me get another person to help us do some of this work, especially in the areas of stormwater. And then we're growing a lot, so we need somebody that's here every day that can help with some of the planning issues. You know, right now, we contract with our planning, you know, things that take place, our new construction and redevelopment and those kind of things. And so we've got another gentleman here that helps with that. But a lot of the stuff, we just, what we did is we went out and compared some of the other cities and tried to stay kind of in the middle. And Matt done a lot of that background work, and I'll let him talk about that in a few minutes. But some of the stuff, we were just kind of low on stuff and things that we probably need to increase. And then some of the stuff, we just didn't have. And so some of the stuff that we, you know, we didn't have were a lot of the stormwater permitting requirements. And so, you know, we, we felt like we needed to, you know, get some permit fees in for some of that work we do. It'll pay some of it, it won't pay all of it, but it'll be a, a big help. And it'll also help us track it better in the future. So anyway, if you've got any questions for me, I know you guys got your packet and you got to see kind of what we did. But if you have any questions or would like to ask Matt any questions about how, how he determined his, his fee numbers, please feel free to ask us.
Right now, I'd just like to elaborate just a little bit. Right now, on our stormwater, which since we got put in the Knoxville TPO, we, we have very strenuous regulations we have to follow. And, and, you know, we're getting more and more, especially with the weather changing, the hard rains. Councilman McBride just gave me a request to look at his property. So we contract that out. We do not have a stormwater engineer or expert on staff. And right now, we contract one out at twenty-five thousand a year. But we're probably using him more and more. Where it used to be, he came out a couple of times a month. He's probably coming out at least once a week, if not more often, with issues. And, and he's very good and very useful. So this will, as John said, we could see down the road maybe having to either hire him for more time or look at getting a stormwater engineer on staff.
One thing, Larry and I, of course, we're on the planning commission, so we kind of heard, we had a lot more detail on this. One thing I really liked what Matt did was, they're not the lowest fees, they're not the highest fees. They're, they're right in, pretty much right in the middle. And I think that's very fair. But I think some of these fees haven't been changed. I know it's, it's been updated, but not, all of them were updated in two thousand nine. There's been some back in the nineties. So we're just trying to keep up to par. And again, there's a lot more cost on our shoulders, for example, the stormwater that we didn't have in the past. So I think it's very fair and, and honestly, I think it's very needed for us to do this.
And I might add, the storm, a lot of the stormwater stuff has been mandated by the state but not funded.
Right, exactly.
So it's going to be out of our pocket. So there's definite need for us to get some kind of compensation out of this.
Anybody have any questions for John or Matt? Thank you all. Hear a motion for approval?
Thank you.
Second, oh, roll call, please.
Councilman Quiner.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrell. Councilman Gann.
Here, yes.
Councilwoman Maynard.
Yes.
And Mayor Burton.
Yes. Ordinance number six-seventy-seven passes on first reading, first of two readings. And before we move forward, John, I want to, again, thank you personally. I think you've done a great job. I know I always think back when you came in, you were talking, I think coming from Farragut, coming to Clinton is going to be like a little slow, a slow time for you and just kind of ease into retirement. And I think you were rudely mistaken by that, so... But, but I certainly appreciate it. And I know, I know a hundred, a hundred percent confidence that Matt's going to pick up where you left off and will carry on. But again, I want to, I want to thank you on behalf of the council. Thank you for all you've done. Appreciate it. Ordinance number six-seventy-eight, this is fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Who would like to speak on that?
I'll start off.
You want to go ahead and get a motion?
Well, go ahead and get a motion.
Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Gail, get on me if I didn't do that. I mean Gina. Roger?
I'll just go over some of the highlights, and if there's any detailed questions, we can ask Chris tonight or give us a call later before a second reading, because really, everything can change if we need to. Just some of the highlights of the 23-24 budget. Of course, it's a balanced budget with a small excess of revenues with no property tax increase. Our property tax remains at a current rate of 86, 80.8646, which one penny equals approximately $40,995. Some miscellaneous revenue items that we've looked at. We increased the local option sales tax and state, state sales tax based on current year estimates. We increased business tax based on current year estimates. We also increased the hotel motel tax. And additionally, as we've been working through the state budget, we'll be receiving some state funding for the SRO program. Expenditures, right now, we have employee raises at 4%, which is approximately $197,000. I'll speak on that again in a minute. We implemented the new pay plan last month that you all approved and passed, and we appreciate that. Employee health, health insurance budget at an estimate of 20%. We've been budgeting high on that, and it's been coming in way below it, but we'd rather kind of be conservative on, on our estimates there. We also maintain the contribution rate of our TCR, TCRS at 7%, which is above the 3.12 recommended. Miscellaneous expenditures, our mowing contract, and we talked about that last month, our previous one we'd had for several years, had health issues, so we had to increase it. We increased our employee-related expenses by $12,700, and that's for drug screen, driving records, stuff when we have new hires. And we also increased JB's Fourth of July celebration budget by $8,500. Four questions. Chris, I would like to back up and talk about our revenues and employee raises. And we kind of talked individually to you all about this, and we was wanting to kind of wait and see where we were at when it got closer to first reading. Since our expenditures are up, since we're looking at the SRO program and getting some funding for it, I'd like to recommend an amendment before we pass first reading of the budget that we do a 4% cost of living for all employees, but we also do an additional 4% for phase one of the city's new pay plan initiative for a total pay increase of 8% to all city employees. Now, only one hitch on this. If an employee is below the new minimum of his new salary range, he'll get whatever is greater. So if, if the 8% still doesn't get him up to the new minimum, he may get eight and a half percent or nine percent even, because we want to get everybody up to that minimum, as we talked about last month, which that's already budgeted in, so.
It's every employee, 8%, correct?
Minimum 8%.
Minimum 8%.
Yes, actually, there may be a few that get a little bit more to our, to our new pay plan, but, but that's okay.
Any questions for Roger?
We need to make a motion for that amendment.
How do we do that, Bill? Yeah, make a motion.
I'll second that amendment.
And you got the amendment based on what you just said?
Yes, and we'll, we'll have those numbers in the final reading next block.
Have a, a, a motion on amendment in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's do a roll call.
Councilman Kleaner.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harold, Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker, Councilman Mina.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, amendment passes unanimously.
Hey, guys, I appreciate that, and I'm sure the 110 so employees that we have will appreciate it. Talking with Bill, Councilman Kleaner, former Fire Chief Archie Bromett, that's about the biggest raise we can remember in our, our career. They thought maybe back in the late 70s, they may have just a little bit more. Of course, then they wasn't making $8,000, so 10% then wouldn't have been much. So this is by far, my 36 years here, the biggest pay increase we gave our employees.
Yeah, we got a 10% sometime in the 70s, but we didn't make a lot of money then.
And I think we need to make sure everybody realizes we're in a competitive market.
Oh, well, you know, that's true. You know, the, the, our good friend, the sheriff, just got like 1.7. I think that he's asking for employee salaries there. Rome County just did a 19%. Knoxville, 8%, and they're asking for more. So we, we've got to stay competitive.
Well, I think also with our, with our healthcare package too, it, it really differentiates us from other cities and counties.
Yeah, the sheriff in Knox County's asking for 30%.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and it's a reflection upon management as well, not only you, but also a reflection upon department heads managing money and managing funds. I mean.
Well, and I'll have to say, Mayor and council too, because we've, we've came a long way since 2010.
Two years ago, couldn't you?
No.
No. No. But it's, it's a good, good situation. I'm grateful.
Do we?
They want to do it, but.
Yeah, right. Sorry.
It's good.
We'll be happy to do that.
Any general questions for, for Chris or for Roger for the, in regards to the budget?
Good job.
Yeah, I think he looks solid.
That whole process is.
Nice, a little easier, so.
Good job.
So back to the original motion. Any, no, no further discussion? Can we have a roll call on, on the original motion?
Councilman Kleaner.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harold, Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker, Councilman Mina.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. Ordinance number 678 passes on first of two readings.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Any old business before us? Any new business? Means adjourned.
Yes.
Good job.